This meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. I want to welcome everybody back after a well-deserved Fourth of July weekend, and I hope everybody had a good and safe weekend. Can I get a motion to approve, to allow Mr. Kelly to attend this meeting via electronic communication? Item 3.01.
Mr. Chair, I move to allow that Mr. Kelly attend the meeting via electronic communication.
Second.
And, Miss Aller.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. We're going to come back to 2.02 since they were part of board closed session. Ms. Cook, was that your concern?
Also, just announcing where and why both board members, for the record.
Do we need to do that again?
Yes, for the, yeah, for the record, because the public weren't, yeah.
And, Ms. Aller, if you'll do that for us.
Certainly. Mr. Kelly is participating via electronic communication through Zoom from Paulies Island, South Carolina.
Thank you, Ms. Aller. And we'll go to 3.02 approval to allow Ms. Hummel to attend meeting via electronic communication. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we allow Ms. Hummel to attend this meeting via electronic communication.
Any second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, Ms. Aller.
And Ms. Hummel is attending via electronic communication from Lake Geneva, Wisconsin. Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly? Sorry, yes, so, Mr. Kelly?
He said aye.
He did, okay, sorry. Dr. Beers?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Can I have someone certify closed session, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motions convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Ms. Aller, would you take the role, please?
Sir. Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here in a virtual day.
And Mr. Dowell?
Here. Ms. Cook, would you handle item 3.04 for us?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that we approve the agenda with the following revision, adding item 10.02 Personnel Investigation, and then adjusting the other action item numbers accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Ms. Ombi, thank you. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. That takes us to item 4.01, Announcements and Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Last week, we welcomed 988 students back to classrooms for summer school. These pictures, which are about to come up right now, are from the first day, and as you can see, students were already engaged in learning. For reference, 222 students participated in summer school last year when we offered acceleration courses only. During the summer before the pandemic, 865 students were enrolled, meaning we've added more than 120 students this summer. In other news, several of our schools are getting a summer makeover this month. But these colorful window coverings are more than meets the eye. The decals create a one-way visual barrier for safety. You can see out of the window, but students and activities are not visible from the outside. In addition, the decals help maintain a moderate temperature throughout the day, which can help reduce heating and cooling costs. And finally, tonight, one last look back at our class of 2021 graduation ceremonies. The pandemic and building construction at Kaplan Arena forced us to switch things up. We celebrated our seniors' and outdoor ceremonies at Wener Field, and although it was a little warm, we had two beautiful days. Let's take a look. What a wonderful reminder of why we do what we do every single day. The videos from each graduation ceremony are available on the Division's website, and hundreds of photographs are posted on our Facebook page. Mr. Dowell, that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any board members that have a board report to present? Seeing none. I just wanted to say that I've been driving, of course, I drive up and down Richmond Road and past Tohono, and I'd noticed those decals, and they kind of popped up out of nowhere. I just thought they were cool. I didn't realize they actually served a function. That's even better. So, they're very cool, though. Nice to see. We're going to move on to item 5.01, Students and Our Staff Recognitions, and I do believe we have two. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. We don't typically hold recognitions in July, but we wanted to celebrate a state championship that was won at the end of the school year. We are proud to recognize Jamestown's girls tennis team for being named the Virginia High School League Class Four State Girls Tennis Champions. Joining us on behalf of the team are captains Sydney Lowe, state doubles champion Julia Clark, and head coach Karen Johnson. Ladies, please come forward to be recognized and have your picture taken with, Chair? With a final record of 15-0, this undefeated team never took their eyes off the prize. After defeating the three-time state champions during the semifinals, the team was even more confident moving into the finals. The day after winning the championship, the doubles team took their state championship as well. Congratulations to the entire team and to Coach Johnson on the championship and a perfect season. We're so proud of you. Mr. Chair, we look forward to resuming student and staff recognitions at the regular meeting in September.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Excellent, thank you so much. Let's move on to item 6.01, Citizens Comments. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. Those speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allotted two minutes tonight to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Just a point of clarification, so all of the speakers that are here couldn't hear the instructions.
They've been told by me in groups and pods, if you will, and I believe Mr. Keever has also explained that, and they'll be, they'll have, I guess, that fourth explanation as each one comes through. Yeah. So, we've taken care of that, I think. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Aller? I think Ms. Cook has it. Do you want Ms. Aller to take care of the time?
That would be lovely.
Yeah, let's hand it over to Ms. Aller.
If there's a sound, that would be great.
You have sound with that, please? And what we discussed was that we're not going to have it chime early. It's just going to be at the two-minute mark, please. We don't want to offer any confusion there.
Fellow lights.
I think we're ready for our first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Dr. Camilla Buchanan.
My name is Camilla Buchanan. I live in James City County. I came to tell you that I support the Elevate Beyond Excellence Strategic Plan that the school board is considering, and I encourage you to adopt it. However, there's always a however, I am concerned about the specificity of the diversity and inclusion and equity aspects. I'd like to see it be more straightforwardly addressed. So, the school population is really diverse, our school population these days. So, we have a wide, a number of different races in our, in our school population, white, black, Asian. We also have different ethnicities. We have students who have sexual orientation different from straight students, and we have students who have gender identity that doesn't fit into the male/female category. And these students' needs need to be addressed specifically in a real diversity, equity, and inclusion policy that is specific. I, my daughter, actually, I have three children who graduated from James City County schools, and my daughter is, has two mothers. And I remember so well when she was in, a senior in high school, she was just over it. She was really just over it. And she marched into the principal's office and said, "I absolutely refuse to fill out these forms anymore that ask for my father's name. You need to change these forms and make it Parent 1 and Parent 2." And it just never occurred to the people in the school system that that was offensive to students who had two mothers or two fathers. So, I think we need to have a specific plan for diversity and inclusion.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Karen Bergsagel?
Thank you for your time. I'm Karen Bergsagel. I'm here in support of your Elevate Beyond Excellence Strategic Plan, but in particular, I'd like to see real progress made in the initiative to promote equitable access to gifted programming and advanced courses. The current data that I've looked at shows that minority students in WJCC schools are woefully underrepresented in those areas, and I hope that that's something that you can pay special attention to as you continue to implement the initiatives. I also have a concern about implementation of the new state requirement for a policy on the treatment of transgender students. I hope that the policy that Williamsburg James City County schools develop will offer robust protections for transgender students, including the use of preferred pronouns and names. And I look forward to seeing the policy when it is released. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carolyn Patrina?
Thank you for letting me be here today. I'm Carolyn Patrina at 4747 Yardley Loop. We just moved, so I have to remember. I came to you today initially talking about CRT, and I was thinking about how it really impacted my life. My father was in the Navy. His father was in the Navy. So, my grandfather was on the USS WASP and was on it when it sunk, World War I, thankfully lived. My father flew 230 missions in Vietnam, thankfully lived. I joined the Navy. My brother joined the Air Force. The other brother joined the Army. I've supported Bosnia, thankfully, I'm here, thankfully. My husband is retired Air Force. He was part of shock and awe. All his family has been in the military, their siblings and spouses. So, what I'm here today to tell you is that I fought, my family has fought, for liberty and freedom. And we think it's so critical that we treat everybody with an equal opportunity. I appreciate the fact that I was able to be in the military. It was not easy, right? It was not welcoming, but it was an awesome opportunity, and I truly benefited from it. And I think as we move forward, things like white privilege really trigger me because I think I fought for the right to be at the helm and defend the country. I was proud to do that. But I don't want to apologize for being white. And so, if there are things going that direction, it's very harmful to me, and I think it would be harmful to my family. So, I'll just end with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Susan Franz?
Good evening. My name is Susan Franz. I live at 103 Cardinal Court, excuse me. Diversity, cultural competency, and inclusion are some of the smokescreen words used to disguise the real agenda of critical race theory. Critical race theory is a lie. Thirty-six years ago, I was commissioned into the Army by then-Major General Colin Powell. I'm sure you all know who he is. He is black. He is an African-American son of Haitian immigrants who lived in Harlem, New York. He later became the first African-American Secretary of State, and after that became the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. His many service awards include a Purple Heart. Critical race theory teaches that whites have rigged the system so that they have advantage over other races. It teaches that equal opportunity is bad and that equity of outcomes is good. I submit to you that if the system is rigged, as critical race theory teaches, Colin Powell would never have achieved the status that he did in the United States of America. And I am proud to say that he commissioned me into the Army. I have no problem with a black man commissioning me, a white person, into the Army. What you're teaching with critical race theory, when you implement this in the classrooms, and I know it's being disguised in other words, is wrong. It is wrong to teach our children that. Any child can achieve wonderful things, and it doesn't matter what color they are, and there's not one race holding them back. I would submit to you that the destruction of the family unit, it is what is holding other minority races back. Children that do not grow up with a dad at home, and that's happening in white families, too. It's not primarily black families or Latin families anymore.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's my thing to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Hildum?
Susan Hildum from James City County, representing the local NAACP chapter. While we as a country become more aware of misunderstanding among ethnic groups While we, as a country, become more aware of misunderstanding among ethnic groups, it is not surprising that our schools have sought to teach a more complete version of history than in the past. We support the teaching of documented factual history. There is much historical material that expresses opinions and points of view, such as Supreme Court decisions, the writings and speeches of Frederick Douglass, Reverend Martin Luther King's letter from the Birmingham jail, the sometimes contradictory writings of Thomas Jefferson, or the record of Jim Crow laws and policies created throughout the nation. These are all worthy of study and great resources for classroom discussion and learning. They show where a country has come from, how it developed, and how we got to present-day laws and customs. We are all enriched by these and many other resources. It is important for our youth, as future active citizens, to have this knowledge. In the classroom, it is valuable to recognize the contributions of all groups, including indigenous peoples, the plentiful immigrant populations who still come to our shores, and especially those brought here against their will, who gave so much to this land and became Americans as fully as any others. As it is important to teach the history of each group, especially when it is told in its own voice, we believe that understanding each other's stories and celebrating diversity will make our society stronger. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Wilson. We believe there is still work to do in order to recognize and include every citizen under the term "American." Our public education system can contribute by leveling the playing field, by devoting the resources really needed to bring disadvantaged groups to a level equal to the larger group. It means using financial resources in targeted ways and putting teachers who look like them in front of the students. It means treating minorities with equity in order to attain true equality. To quote Aaron Spence, Superintendent of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, "We know empirically that academic achievement requires an environment where students feel socially and emotionally secure and able to take the intellectual risks necessary to learn and flourish." Building that environment means having schools and classrooms, and a school, I'm sorry, schools and classrooms, and a school division where all students feel seen, known, cared about, included, and supported, where the diversity of thought and culture and background that defines us all is welcome, and where children and adults feel they belong. It is a lot to ask the education system to correct the injustices that have existed in other aspects of our society. We only ask that you do what is within your power to provide, a more complete and inclusive history of our community, state, and country. To this end, we fully support enriching schools' curricula with information on the history of enslaved people and other minority groups whose descendants are now United States citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lawrence Golson, James City County, the current president for York James City County, Williamsburg NAACP. Let's be very clear about what truly matters. We want all kids to have an education that is honest about who we are, that promotes integrity in how we treat others, and that helps students develop the courage to do what's right. Education should be about pursuing the truth, and that truth is number one. All teachers can be proud to be a part of a profession that pursues these critical goals, whether we're black, white, indigenous, Latino, or Asian. We want our kids to have an education that encourages them to dig deeper into who they are, where they came from, and what they are capable of becoming. We know that ensuring that each student feels heard and valued is a critical building block to a successful education. We think it is very unfortunate and ultimately bad for students that politicians and talking heads on TV are attacking the public schools for pursuing the goals I've just outlined. In Virginia, over the years, there have been citizens who have been opposed school integration, who have resisted making history textbooks reflect, who have resisted making history textbooks reflect the contributions of women and people of color, who have fought against the poor kids getting a quality education on par with white students or what students in a majority-white school get. There are people who have tried to block all those things. We are proud of the way we, Virginians, are making public schools more equitable. Our public schools are standing up for our nation's most important values, and we don't shy away from that at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Everybody's phone muted going forward.
Andrew Fisher.
Going to double-check myself. Thank you. My name is Dr. Andrew Fisher. I'm a parent of a rising senior at Lafayette High School and a professor of American history at the College of William and Mary. I teach and write about modern U.S. history with a specialization in Native American history, so I'm very familiar with the issue of races and racism in American society and also with the controversies that these discussions have generated in our society for a long time. I think that the current hysteria, and I don't think that's too strong a word, around so-called critical race theory is just the latest skirmish in the history wars that have been going on in this country for decades. In this war, CRT, or Critical Race Theory, has been weaponized as a scare word to attack, really, any discussion of race or racism in American history that makes certain people uncomfortable. And so, I think for some people, really, it means any discussion of race or racism in American history or in American society today. I doubt that most of the people on the other side of this debate have read any actual works of critical race theory, which is a fairly obscure academic concept that is not widely taught, or at least has not been historically widely taught, outside of law schools and grad schools. My daughter, for example, who is now almost a senior, had never heard the term before the current controversy erupted. What critics of CRT are really objecting to, I think, is a fair, open, and honest accounting of the role of race, ideas about race, and the practice of racism in our national history.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Pat Burcher. I live at 3700 Lake Palatan. I am a grandmother of eight grandchildren and two little twin great-granddaughters. I have a stake in what happens in our country and especially in our schools. We have been shut up, shut in, scared to speak for a year now. We've got misinformation from all areas, and we've been shut out. I speak for a big population of retired people. We've seen a lot, done a lot, and we know a lot, and we want to tell somebody before we forget what we learned. I am concerned about what I've heard about critical race theory. It seems like when I looked up the definition of theory, it was so convoluted, I felt like my brains were scrambled. So, I just need some hard information on what is happening, what is really happening, what is concrete, what has the Board of Education passed, and what is coming down the pipe for our children. I have four teachers, four granddaughters who are teachers. I don't have any children in the school system here, except for in a teaching capacity. But I appreciate all you do, and I think that we just, we need a lot more information on what is really going on, and pardon this phrase, but from the horse's mouth, you know? You guys know what's going on. We need more information. So, I don't know when you'll be voting on adopting whatever plan it is you're going to adopt, but it would be good if you could give us more information on what's happening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Can I start?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Leah Corogano. I'm here speaking as a team member with the Village Initiative. I'm speaking also as a supporter of the school board's 2020 Elevate Beyond Excellence Strategic Plan, which is committed to several equity initiatives that the Village supports, including promoting equitable access to gifted programs and advanced courses, developing relationship-focused classrooms that celebrate students' differences. So, we wanted to reiterate our support for those parts of the strategic plan. Additionally, the Village would encourage the school board to pursue additional recommendations made by the Village, including committing to evidence-based approaches to equity by conducting school climate surveys, evaluating data on English-language students as well, and family support for English-language students, analyzing data on discipline, and gifted and talented advancement enrollment by race, strengthening support networks and the voices of students, teachers, and families of color in decision-making by asking for feedback, adopting programs for restorative justice, and establishing a Teachers of Color Advisory Board. And I will leave you with that. I know there are a lot of people who want to speak, but thank you for your attention, and the Village will continue our message consistently as we always have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Quark.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Amy Quark, and I'm a parent and a member of the Village Initiative. As the new school year and the return to full-time, in-person learning approaches, I want to urge you, as the school board and our administrators, to not be distracted from your important goals that you've articulated, and that is to use a data-driven approach to equity and a positive school climate. This, of course, means addressing the racial discipline gap. We have had our students out of the schools in virtual learning, and when we come back, we don't want to reproduce this longstanding problem. In 2018, 2019, I know you're familiar with the statistic, students identifying as black, Hispanic, or of two or more races accounted for more than 67% of short-term and 86% of long-term suspensions, though they only make up 39% of the WJCC student population. The racial discipline gap is related to school climate. Research demonstrates that black, Hispanic, and indigenous students feel less safe, less supported, and less connected to their school communities. The school district needs to conduct an annual review on discretionary offenses by race and a school climate survey to guide data-driven strategies to ensure that all students feel safe, respected, and connected to their school community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kimberly Hunley.
Good evening, everyone. Kimberly Hunley, 108 Mattapani Trail, proud to be in the Palatan District and running for Ms. Unspie's seat, and I would be honored to sit there. And I just wanted to tell you, I miss school so much. I'm teaching summer school, and I've been doing letters and sounds this week, and the letters CRT did not cause any trauma for me, but, because I know they're really pushed by three other letters, but since I'm bipartisan, I'm not going to mention what those are. But there are four letters we need to be concerned about, and that is TCOF. I felt it, I heard it, I saw it. It is the color of fear. That is what we're dealing with. But we have a spiritual warfare, and we also have social warfare. We all want to eloquently, you know, talk about Dr. Martin Luther King. He does say injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere, but this is the one I really love. We must build dykes of courage to hold back the flood of fear. I have faith over fear. I have this wristband that Dr. Herron gave all the staff members. It says on here, "The power of 'we.' We are WJCC. We are not Oregon. We are not Loudoun County. We are not Gloucester. We are not Nova. We are WJCC, and we can do big things." And I was going to bring my boxing gloves, but I knew, after looking at the Loudoun thing, there'd be security, so I didn't bring my boxing gloves. But I love this part in Vegas, when they say, "Ring that bell. The school year is starting. We can do this, so let's get ready to rumble." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Laura Emery. I'm at 4635 Town Creek Drive. I'm a new resident to Newtown, and I am here today in support of the Village Initiative's recommendations stated in their Equity Report. I'm also here to fully support the school board's Elevate Beyond Excellence Strategic Plan, especially where it's Goal Number Two for Educational Equity. I especially support the goal to create a positive, relationship-focused classroom, a learning environment where student differences are appreciated and celebrated, and that's all students of all ethnicities, all gender, transgender, or non-gender identities. I would also like the school board to perhaps believe in strengthening support networks, raising up the voices of students, teachers, and families of color in decision-making, adopting programs for restorative justice, and establish a Teachers of Color Advisory Board. I applaud your school board's strategic plan, and I hope that you do not lose focus of fostering a learning environment that respects the diversity of students and provides targeted, equitable opportunities for success for all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Gilbert Petrina.
Good evening. I'm Gil Petrina, resident of James City County. You've heard a lot this evening on critical race theory. You'll hear even more from the people who are still in the hall and even after this meeting, and be talking about this for a long time. I would simply like to implore you, as you listen to, deliberate, and make decisions on how to move forward on this topic, to place equal, if not more, emphasis on science, technology, engineering, math, and basic communication skills for our students. While this is a very important topic, we need to get them where they need to be to compete in the business environment that we're looking at now. This is how we will create equity and equality for students to be competitive, valuable, and relevant in the 21st century environment. And you've got a busy evening. Thanks for hanging in there, and I appreciate all you do. Have a great evening.
Thank you, sir.
Philip Kennedy.
Good evening. I'm Philip Kennedy, a lifelong resident of Williamsburg-James City County. For me this evening, I won't talk so much about the elephant that's in the room because I don't believe it is something that we teach in our K-12 schools. It is something that's taught at the collegiate level. I think it's important to be left at the collegiate level. Right now, there's a lot of misinformation going on as it's being taught in the classroom because everything is thrown underneath of it, but it is not. I am here as a Village member and just want to support our strategic plan. Our strategic plan focuses on educational equity, and there are many strategies that are in place under that. And I would hate for the board to become distracted by this political machine that's rolling out all of this misinformation. I think it's very important for the school board and teachers to be educated on critical race theory, but it's not something that has been or will be taught in our K-12 schools. And I think that's, and very important for us to stay focused on, but definitely, we need to educate the community on what critical race theory is and what it is not, because a lot of misinformation is going down, and they're plugging too many things into it, which is not critical race theory. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Mary Bull. I, for a while, was a history interpreter at Jamestown in Conne Williamsburg. Spent a lot of literal sweat talking about history here in this town. Now, people are spending a lot of money to foment this kind of sudden panic about critical race theory. For example, Rob Whitman says critical race theory is teaching that racism is systemic. If I'm at Jamestown and I'm teaching people statements like, "People came here to make money," or "People in Virginia can get married if they want to," or "People worked until they died with no pay," you know, every one of those statements, when I say "people," that doesn't apply to everyone in Virginia. That has to be qualified, like white and black people in Virginia did not have the same experience for reasons bigger than any one person. Whole systems were built over time through the legislatures and the courts that created those differences. If you're a citizen who's upset about CRT, I think you need to establish the good faith that you stand for children learning accurate history in its complexity. It is hard. It can be done badly. in learning accurate history and its complexity. It is hard. It can be done badly. We can help teachers with more training and books and time to study and learn and think about things. I don't think we help them by fake political controversy. I was homeschooled in Surrey County by parents who were afraid of different perspectives in the classroom. That was a huge reason for them. Widening the scope of what children learn is the work of liberty. Banning teaching ideas and historical facts is a is a work of totalitarianism or authoritarianism. It's not, it's not something that helps students.
Thank you.
Randy Mathis.
I'm Phyllis Eastman, and
Ma'am, one second. Phyllis Eastman.
Okay, Phyllis Eastman, that was next, but we can go back to Randy Mathis.
Randy Mathis next. Can we start the time over, please?
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, you're ready.
I'm Phyllis Eastman, and I've been thinking that when we adopt policies or adopt theories, it leads to practical consequences, and I've tried to become informed about critical race theory since it's become an issue. And these are examples that I've heard from students on TV or on radio that have experienced CRT, and these are practical things. The first one is a California kindergarten teacher had, kindergarten teacher had children use crayons to color their classmates based on race. One of the things about children is they're not very racial when they're little. Fairfax school member encouraged her students to join, when she gave the graduation address, to join jihad as they faced a future of racism, white supremacy, greed, and extreme versions of individuality. A Missouri middle school teacher had her students locate themselves on an oppression matrix. Philadelphia fifth-grade teacher, the whole fifth grade, celebrated Black Power and held a mock Black Power rally. A Seattle teacher taught her students that white teachers are guilty of spirit murder against Black children. Princeton announced that they will eliminate Greek and Latin because minorities are not as successful in those courses. The Virginia Department of Education has considered eliminating advanced math and science until the 11th grade due to the success rate of white and Asian students.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, gosh. Thank you very much for your time.
Now we have Randy Mathis.
Good evening. I'm Randy Mathis. I live at 6292 Glen Wilton Lane. I went to the College of William &amp; Mary back in the day, and I was a teacher for five years in Reichel High School. I have three children that went to Virginia schools. I was a pastor of a small church in West Point for quite a while, so I wanted on purpose to go into the schools and be a substitute at West Point and New Kent and King William to hear what is on the heart of the children. I did that on purpose. I respect your position. You're necessary, and you're needed, and I appreciate what you do. I'm new in town, so I really don't know what you do. Been here two whole weeks, from West Point, 17 years in Richmond, brought back after 46 years after I left William &amp; Mary. And I just, I just want to be here to have some input. I'll be watching and listening, see what kind of School Board you're going to be. I've heard some horror stories, unfortunately, about other School Boards around, but I'm going to take the high road, and I figure you're not going to be like some of those other School Boards I've heard horror stories over. I hope and pray you really do have the good of the students at heart. I'm sure you do. I'm a pastor, been a pastor for 28 years. I think there's some certain traditions we do need to hold in place, traditions like gender stability, not gender fluidity. The Bible says God is perfect. He doesn't make mistakes. He's immutable. He never changes. He knits your inward parts together, and if he made you a boy, you're a boy. If he made you a girl, you should be a girl. And if he made you a boy, your DNA is in every cell like that. You should be happy, proud, and own your manhood, conversely for a girl. CRT, the problem there is divisive. Anytime you have a press versus oppressor, you've got this, you people and you people, and if you want to destroy a church, a football team, or a nation, have people saying "you people" or "you people." We don't be versus. It's "we the people" from the get-go. Wow, okay. Well, that was really quick. Well, God bless you.
Sir, you still have time.
Oh, good, good. So we have, but we can't be divisive anything that
I'm sorry. Your time is up.
You took five seconds to
I did.
Hey, God bless you all. Thank you. I appreciate you hearing us, and thanks for being cool in here.
Thank you, sir.
Ty Lagaman.
My name's Ty Lagaman, and I appreciate the opportunity to revisit with you again. I know there's been a lot of talk about critical race theory. What is it? Is it relevant, et cetera? I'd actually like to focus a little bit on the cultural competency training that's been formulated by the Virginia Board of Education. On 12 April, they passed interim guidelines. In there, for the definition of anti-racism, this is what teachers have to both accept and promulgate in their classes and lesson plans, and it is acknowledges that racist beliefs and structures are pervasive in all aspects of our lives and requires action to dismantle those beliefs and structures. So we have to accept, then, that we're systemically racist and that this is what we should be teaching in our schools. And so I know we're talking about CRT, and nobody's rolling out CRT, but the foundation of CRT is systemic racism. Are we institutionally, through unconscious bias, systemically racist? And do we need to overturn that? I think we really need to focus on what teachers are going to be required under these new guidelines. I would love to see that the School Board would have a hand on, on what each teacher has to do versus each teacher going out on their own and becoming a social justice warrior, coming up with their own alternative content in classes, because that's what's being asked right now by Board of Education, is that each teacher will find alternative means. And I think what you're going to find is you're going to have different teachers doing different things at different times, and you will lose control of the consistent, reliable education of our students. So one, as I'd ask, is are we really going to teach that we're systemically racist, and that we need to change our institutions? I think it's a dangerous thing to use history for. Everyone can embrace teaching a more holistic version of equity and race. I could come up with all kinds of stories. It'd be fascinating to hear kids talk about why do people start to have conflict with early settlers? What changed? How did different things evolve? But every piece of history could have more voices. That's not what we're talking about. So appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good one.
Toby Weisman.
Thank you for your time. I'm here tonight as a taxpayer and a parent, very concerned about the parent acceptance of a dangerous educational framework that does not prioritize teaching children with a goal towards academic excellence. It is not addressing the poor literacy or math competency our students have, and I've heard that critical race theory is not something that's going to be taught. So I ask you, as a School Board member, do you, one, accept teaching equity of outcome versus equal opportunity? Do you accept teaching race essentialism versus character essentialism? Do you accept teaching students to embrace societal shame to which they did not contribute, systemic racism, versus actual individual guilt for personal wrongs committed? Do you accept teaching a narrow view of history, which our slavery is certainly a scourge on our nation, but then ignore that there were other world injustices? The Babylonians invaded Israel. The Mongols invaded Europe. The Russians starved their people, and the Germans perpetrated a Holocaust upon the Jews. Do you accept that culturally responsive leaders should challenge aspects of teaching that marginalize students of color, which equates to not providing students the opportunity to accelerate, such as in math, perhaps? If we had not had incremental progress with such things like the Civil Rights Act and the Brown versus Board of Education, we would not have had people like Dr. Shirley Jackson, Dr. Patricia Bath, and Dorothy Vaughn. Do you accept that culturally responsive teaching sees race and racism vis-à-vis power and oppression, and thus necessitates mediating power imbalances in the classrooms based on race, culture, ethnicity, and gender in class, as is now written in the Virginia Board of Education standards? If you can intellectually, honestly answer yes to any of the above, then that is a destructive ideology of critical race theory that teaches that students are
Ma'am, thank you. Thank you.
Sarah Artego.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, members of the Board. I'm here to advocate for transparency as it pertains to teacher training and certification requirements. Parents and interested constituents should have access to exactly what the standards and requirements for each subject are, as well as mandatory professional development courses for teachers, including those required this summer. I urge you to commit to ensuring that the highest-quality, most-advanced subject matter for every student is the most important credential for those requirements. I also urge you to commit to ensuring that teaching critical reading and thinking is the basis, should be the basis, of all instruction for every student across all subjects. I'd also like to advocate for ensuring that the majority of the funding that is spent here in our school district is spent to close the real tangible pandemic-induced equity gaps that we are now facing amongst our students. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's the end of public comment. We're going to move on to item 7.01, excuse me, seven proposed agenda items, beginning with 01, review authorization of signatures in the absence of the Superintendent. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an annual item that comes to the Board to ask for authorization for Ms. Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Keever, Chief Operating Officer, and Mr. Walker, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, to sign State Department documents in the absence of the Superintendent through August 15 of next year.
Questions from the Board? One of those routine duties that we see each year. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item 7.02, review tuition rates for non-resident students for 2021, 2022 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley will present this item to the Board this evening regarding, this is an annual item as well that comes to the Board regarding tuition rates. In fact, it's Ms. Ewing on this one. My apologies, and then Dr. Worley later. Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Annually, we bring the non-resident tuition rate for the upcoming school year to you for approval. The tuition rates are based on the adopted fiscal year 22 budget, and the calculation is based on the same methodology as used in prior years. The recommended tuition rate for regular education is $11,850, which is an increase of $1,275, or 12.06% over fiscal year 21. The special education tuition rate is recommended to be $20,017, which is an increase of $1,586, or 8.61% over fiscal year 21. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Sombi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewing, I'm just curious, particularly with the special education figure, like, how does that compare to our most closest neighbors?
I don't have that information for you this evening, but I can certainly get it for you. We don't typically have special education tuition students, and many years ago, it's typically when a division can't provide the services themselves. I know years ago, we had a West Point student that came here, and the school division actually paid the tuition for the student.
And so generally, is it like less than one, like, we usually have like one student that is paying tuition?
Yes. This past school year, we had one full-time student. The year before, we only had one student for one class, and these were all regular education students. And then in FY '18 and '19, we had one full-time student each of those years.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Ewing, two questions related to this item. The first is, I'm looking at the breakdown of the tuition calculation and just wanted to confirm that this figure does not include any of the grant funding dollars related to the pandemic that are coming into the division, so that is not part of the calculus. Is that right?
That's correct. It's not. It's based on our operating budget only.
Thank you. And the increase, am I to assume that it's because our budget went up a little bit, but our enrollment went down a little bit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Young, did I, so you had a question?
I need to ask a question about pre-K students. Pre-K students pay the same, the same tuition, the $11,850.
I don't believe we allow pre-K students on a tuition basis.
Those are our bright beginning students, and they are part of our
They're part of our school division.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
I don't want to overlook Mr. Kelly and Ms. Hummel. Any questions or comments, virtually?
Not for me.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. I think that we don't have any more questions on. Item 7.02, we'll move on to 7.03. Review revisions to Policy JN Appendix A, Student Fee Schedule for School Year 2021-22. And just to clarify, the Policy Committee didn't see this. This is a revision of Appendix A, not the actual policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Dr. Worley will present the item. This is an annual item that comes to the Board with any changes in fees for courses. Dr. Worley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. Each year, we update the Board on Appendix A of Policy JN, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges. This is not a policy change. This is our annual update of the fee schedule, which is actually Appendix A connected to the policy. For the school year 21-22, we have one change to our fee schedule. The veterinary science course added to the Program of Studies has a fee of $15. This fee will help with the cost of consumables for the course. Perkins Funds will support the purchase of durable equipment and devices needed for the program. As a reminder, driver's ed fees are set by the Virginia Department of Education in September, and we will, we will be communicating this through our classes. Finally, students are eligible each year for fee waivers. Courses with fees are noted in the Program of Studies. The online version of the Program of Studies will actually have a direct link to the fee waiver form for students and families for this school year before the beginning of the year. This link will also be made available on school websites, and hard copies of the fee waiver form are available in the school counseling offices and the main office. Families will also know about the fee waiver opportunity through our family newsletter this fall and through their initial login with VIEW. Students and families will have to acknowledge the fee waiver form before making a direct connection with VIEW, along with other forms that we push out at the beginning of the school year. Teachers will also communicate this option in class and note it on the syllabi when appropriate. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them at this time.
Ms. Sombi.
You answered, you answered one of mine, but that made me think of another question that's kind of ancillary-related. So for students who are doing early college, there's, there are fees associated with that, so just, and you don't have to answer this now. Maybe just later, maybe think about it. So are we still covering some, some of that cost for students who attend early college? And then, and then for others, we're covering all of it for the same reasons, because of the fee waiver?
Right. We, that's a, kind of a bigger, separate item, but we do, we do help students if they have, if they're on free reduced lunch, there's a different cost for them. We support more for some students, and we do provide a certain amount of credit hours each year for all students attending early college.
And is that articulated, I maybe missed it, is that articulated in the Program of Studies, or how do people get that information?
I believe it is. I have to check that for you, but we do, counselors are aware of that and communicate that with students when they are signing up for early college.
Okay, thank you.
But I will check into that one.
Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate this update every year, and I just, one day, would like to get to a point where we don't have to have a fee schedule at all, because we're able to absorb it in our budget and then take away that barrier for families who struggle. You know, sometimes it, just the mechanics of applying for a fee waiver can be a burden, and anyway, it's, one day, I hope we get there.
Any other Board members? Question or comment? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hummel. What did she say? Okay, thank you, Ms. Hummel. We're going to move on to item 7.04, review cooperative contract number R190401 ALC Schools LLC. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Mr. Keever is going to present this agenda item, which speaks to our need for bus drivers and our inability to hire enough drivers for next school year, and this is an alternative to make sure every student gets to school on the first day of school. Mr. Snipes and Ms. Ewing will be here to address questions that you may have as well as we move through this item, because it is a change in how we normally transport students to school. And it looks like we're paying musical chairs. Welcome, Mr. Lambusta, as well. Mr. Keever, please lead us off. Thank you.
Ms. Boujoual will also help us answer questions. As we go through this topic, Board members, I think it's important for us to put you in the best position possible to help support this concept, so we want to be sure in the best position possible to help support this concept, so we want to be sure that we attempt to address and answer all of the questions that you may have on the topic. Over the course of the last 12 or 13 months, we have been, as a school division, looking for ways to maximize our personnel to meet the needs of all students. You may be aware that regionally, there is a critical shortage of bus drivers. That critical shortage is also a part of what's going on in the Williamsburg-Jame City County community as well, and we are critically short of drivers. That was less glaring during our return-to-learn scenario. And the return-to-learn scenario allowed us to be able to move students in and out based on, quite frankly, fewer students attending in-person instruction on a daily basis, because some decided to remain virtually. We are planning for and intend to have all students back five days a week for the '21-22 school year, and want to ensure that we are in the best position possible to move students to and from school. We've looked at our bus data, our capacity information, the ridership information, and have asked ourselves critically, how can we better utilize the drivers that we do have in order to move our students from place to place? Wanted to give you a couple of data pieces as we begin this conversation. Since September of 2020, so over the course of the last 10 months, we have had 46 applicants for our bus driver job posting. Forty-six. Eight of those drivers have gone through the entire process, have been hired to drive for us, passed the CDL, and are currently on our payroll as drivers. Forty-six applicants, eight have made it through that process. I believe that Dr. Heron has shared with you, but I think it's important for the public to also be aware of the numerous advertising options that we have taken into consideration as we've tried to pull drivers into the fold. We've sta, we've stuffed grab-and-go bags with flyers. We have held job fairs. We have included a referral bonus, a signing bonus. We have provided all employees with a $500 bonus based on this board's approval earlier in the year. We put up bulletin boards and billboards. We put banners in the back of our windows, and quite frankly, it's, it's not helped to the degree that we needed to help. The, the scenario is, as we looked at our, some of our students that participate in specialized programs, we noticed that there are, that those buses aren't full to capacity. So we have the buses, we need the drivers. And we considered the best method by which to look at this, and we have explored the concept of utilizing ALC schools to help us move students to and from school. ALC schools is a part of the cooperative contract, which is referenced in the agenda item. They are participating with a very similar program in other school divisions. And as of right now, and the, the numbers are somewhat fluid in terms of the numbers of students that we're attempting to serve, but as of right now, we have identified approximately 80, 85, 90 students that we would like to utilize contracted services in order to be able to get to and from school. And that would allow us somewhere in the neighborhood of 14 drivers back into the mix to be able to serve our students. So I'll go over that again, because I think that's an important caveat. We're talking about approximately 80 students in some of the specialized programs. Many of those are out-of-zone students within Williamsburg-Jame City County School. As a division that is a little bit smaller than other divisions, we have specialized programs and courses offered in particular schools, can offer them in all schools. Because of that, we have some buses that are transporting six, seven students on a daily basis. We also have, right now, four students that we transport to either a program in Richmond or either a program in Newport News, and we're talking about single students on buses with a driver and an aide. And we have, you know, critically examined our, the best way for us to be able to, to serve the needs of all of our students, and feel like this is a, a stopgap measure to put us in position for '21-22 to, to get started on time when that first bell rings on August the 30th. We're looking at lots of different options in terms of not only this upcoming year, but future years. The idea of increasing and building our white fleet, the, the fleet of cars, or minivans, or mini buses that we could utilize to, to support students and moving students. Those particular vehicles don't require the CDL. And one of the barriers that we find as we try to bring drivers in is getting through the rigorous process. And honestly, we want the process to be rigorous if you're driving a school bus, but the rigorous process that folks need to go through in order to qualify and earn and obtain that CDL. If we were able to expand that white fleet, and I'll be frank with you on that, if you've tried to rent a vehicle or a minivan in the recent timeframe, you will note that that is very difficult. They are hard to come by. But we would potentially consider the option of using perhaps year-end funds to be able to purchase and enhance that fleet, to be able to use our own, our own staff, our own drivers. So there, there are a number of components to this that we're looking at very, very carefully. Wanted to bring this forward to you this evening. And one final point that I want to make before we start to perhaps to drive into some questions is that I think that we learned this year with a unified schedule for our middle schools, a schedule that allowed for schools to be able to, at the middle school level, share teachers, that there was a, there was a strength, that there was a synergy there. And this move, we believe, would allow us to create a schedule that allows for all middle schools to be on the same tier as well. So that, that gives you some background in terms of why we're bringing this forward. The, the specific dollar amount for the contract continues to be worked on as we really hone in on which students, which groupings of students we want to incorporate into this scenario. And the contract with the vendor would be a month-to-month contract. So while the dollar amount in total is, is substantial, it would be our goal to, our goal, to not have to use this contract for the entire year for all of the student rides. I'll pause there. Mr. Snipes, Mr. Lambusta are available to answer the specific questions around the transportation scenario. Ms. Bujhwaal is available to answer questions relative to the specialized programs and students involved with that. And then, of course, Ms. Ewing is here to handle all of the financial pieces.
We'll go to Ms. Sombi first.
Thank you. I have a few questions, so just bear with me. I am excited with the idea of getting all of our middle schools on the same start time. I know that's something that we have tried to do for years, and so Twana would, would be very excited. So that, that, for me, is an upside. I'm just curious, is there one particular subgroup of students? It sounds to me like it's students with disabilities, but is, are there, are there others? Is it just one category of students that we would contracting services out for?
Genuinely, ALC, the, the group that we would be utilizing, will not provide regular ed transportation. So this particular company will provide transportation services for students with disabilities and for students that are identified as homeless through McKinney-Vento.
And then, I'm just curious, are there other subdivisions that we're aware of that have used the same contractor to provide services?
Other school divisions?
Yeah.
I'm happy to turn it over.
What did I say?
It's.
I'm tired already. School divisions. I have my caffeine.
Prince William County, Richmond City, District of Columbia, Chesterfield County, Fairfax, Loudoun, Roanoke City, Bedford County, Henrico County, Chesapeake, Hampton, Lynchburg, Alexandria. City of Virginia Beach also, I don't, they may not be using ALC, but the City of Virginia Beach also uses contracted services to move students as well.
Okay. And so then, these vehicles would, would look like minivans, most likely, that they're not a, they're not a bus? Are they a specialized bus? Or do they, I mean?
The type of vehicle will depend on the number of students that would be moved in that mode of transportation. It could be a sedan, it could be a minibus, not a minibus, I'm sorry, a minivan. I apologize.
But, but would they, I guess, depending on the students' needs, they may or may not be wheelchair accessible?
Correct. There would be, if, if the student needed a wheelchair in order to be transported, we would utilize a wheelchair-accessible minivan.
And then I like the idea of a stopgap. So did I hear you say that this, that this, that we might even be able to switch gears mid-year, that this might not be something that we would do the entire academic year?
I, I think in, in full transparency, there will be some students that we, we would recommend that we utilize this transportation for, for the entire year. Our goal would be to utilize our own staff members to be able to do the transporting if we can secure, procure the vehicles. The example I gave with the four students right now that we serve in, in this school setting in Richmond and Newport News, it, it may make the most sense for that student to use this form of transportation for the entire year. So I don't, I don't want to tell you that we would jettison it mid-year. We would want to be able to bring it back in-house to the best of our ability. But the other piece of that is, genuinely, we are somewhere in the neighborhood of 27 to 36 drivers short. We're 36 drivers short, which equates to about 27 FTEs.
And so this program would yield us about 14?
We project that we would be able to pull 14 drivers off of those specialized out-of-zone and out-of-district runs back into our general pool of drivers. And thereby, the total of students that we can move increases. So instead of potentially moving six or seven students or one student, that number goes up to 45 or 50 per run.
And I just have one last question. So do you think that since, looking forward into the future, when we can maybe increase our white fleet, which doesn't require a CDL, do you think that we have those staff in-house or would have them in-house, or would we still need to hire non-CDL verified drivers?
That's an excellent question. Right now, we, potentially, there, there are aides, there, there are people that, that serve in a capacity that may be willing to drive a car, drive a minivan, or even the minibus. My sense is, and I think our sense is, that because there's not a CDL requirement for that, our pool may be expanded, which is potentially part of the reason why companies such as this are able to provide this type of service.
Right. Appreciate all my questions. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a couple of questions. The first is about the, the budgetary impact. So it's leveled just to transfer, or we, or might this cost a little bit more than we had anticipated?
I'll give a, just a, an overview piece, and if I get it wrong, Ms., I'm sure Ms. Ewing will correct me. Our initial thought process is that we would transfer money from the personnel costs related to the drivers that are currently not being staffed as a, as the, the primary driver financially, pardon the pun. That's probably somewhere in the neighborhood. We're projecting right now about $800,000 for that component. We are projecting a savings in fuel cost for some of those out-of-district runs to the tune of about $50,000. And then, in the near term, which is why we think this is a stopgap, we would look to utilize some of the grant funding available through SIR or ARP.
Thank you. So I, I support this, and I really appreciate, I mean, the, the game of musical chairs that you all were playing at the beginning of this agenda item really indicates how collaborative this has been, and, and I appreciate the level of creativity and collaboration to, to bring this sort of stopgap measure. But I do think it needs to be a stopgap measure, you know, one year, two years, because I, I think we, we are WJCC, right? And so the more of the people that are working with our students that are our employees and have the same professional development and the same paycheck and the same messages from the same leadership, the better. So I, I would appreciate kind of stepping back and looking at, you know, those barriers. It seems that you've looked at a lot of them, increasing the white fleet, as it were, and also perhaps looking at bus driver pay. That's always been a challenge. The, the second we raise it, WADA raises it, and so I think we need to leapfrog WADA and, and raise it more so that they can't, they can't beat us the next week. And, and then also raising pay for our lowest employees also gets us out of that issue that we struggle with every time we try to hold level our, our investment in employee benefits, right? And so I think that's a kind of a double, a double-edged sword there. So, you know, to whatever extent that it helps to, to look at that pay so that we can bring that function in-house over the long term, I would appreciate.
Yeah, I think, Ms. Cook, in response to that, we will have an opportunity to have done some sort of cost-benefit analysis going into next year's budget, and at that point, we would, you know, look to the board to look at potential salary increases for, for bus drivers. I, I'm not sure if Mr. Kiefer mentioned it or not, we will, we will have an employee, a teacher assistant with every student who's transported by the contracted company.
That's very comforting to know. Thank you.
Ms. Young.
That was one of mine.
Mr. Dow.
One second, Mr. Kelly.
So I have two, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
Are you pointing towards me?
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly. You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. So we, so, so for me, the fiduciary responsibility is going for the, the fiduciary, the great, the right financial solution. If it's, if it's outsourcing transportation for a child instead of having a bus or, or a larger resource, if it's better to do it with this company, I think we should certainly consider that. And so I wouldn't necessarily, you know, us having the resources and the vehicle and the driver, you know, whatever makes more, the best financial sense for me. So I wouldn't necessarily discount outsourcing it. Dr. Heron talked about the, my, my larger concern beyond the financial is the safety of the students with having a staff member with each student. So then you basically have two adults in the car with our students, and I think that's important. What type of evaluation do the, does the company do of the drivers to ensure that they are safe drivers?
I'm going to let Mr. Snipes, yeah, Mr. Snipes can give some, some information on that.
Good evening, Dr. Heron, school board members. The drivers are vetted. There are background checks, including criminal record, DLJ, DMV, and state sex offender registry checks. There are also some credentialing that is done, which includes a driver and record screening, enrollment in drug and alcohol program, and some dispatch capabilities. So there, there are some credentialing that is, that is done as well.
Mr. Snipes, if you would, add the training that the drivers also receive from the company.
Yeah, they, they do receive training from the company that involves how to deal with students with disabilities. However, I believe Mrs. Bujhwaal can speak to that our special education students, from what our special education department can provide.
Good evening. Our, our special education coordinators did have the opportunity with Mr. Snipes to, to interact with the company, and in addition to the training they do, we will be doing some WJCC training, so that there is a consistency in what that looks like.
Okay, great. So, so for me, it's a two-part question. The first question is the safety of our students and what's the safest way to transport them. And then the second is the financial considerations, to make sure that we're, we're doing the best, getting the best thing for our budget. I mean, you could argue at the end of the day that our, our core business is teaching students and not transporting them, but we spend a lot of money transporting students too, so that's, that's, you could argue that point.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Young.
All right. Well, two of my questions were answered, was one about the training of these drivers. That's, that's important, and I appreciate the fact that one of our, that there would be an aide with every one of these students, because I, I agree that the safety of these students needs to be one of the most primary concerns. I, I guess my, one of my questions, Mr. Snipes, what, what, how many cars do we have in our white fleet currently?
Mr. Lambusta, you're. 56 total in the white fleet.
Okay. And so would some of that $800,000 be used to supplement that number, or, or is that not on the table? Is that just personnel cost?
Currently, that's just personnel cost.
Okay. And I, because I do agree that with, with Ms. Cook, that, that I would prefer that this came under the umbrella of WJCC, but in the interim, I think it's a great solution to a huge problem, because seeing one student on one of those buses, even the smaller buses, is, is kind of, it's a huge waste of money as far as gas, and so I totally support this. So thank you for bringing that forward as a solution to our transportation needs.
Dr. Bears.
We are asking our attorney to take a look at the contract language. I don't want to opine on where I think the liability may, may wind up, but we will, we will have that information and answer for you. and answer for you when we get together on the third.
Yes, sir. Come back to Ms. Omby. Sorry about that.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Bourgeois, your comments triggered a thought and a question. So I can assume, then, that restraint and seclusion, which disproportionately impacts students with disabilities, is something that would be covered in the training?
Yes, it would. And all the accommodations that are in students' IEPs, as far as transportation, will be totally fulfilled within this transportation model. So any, so if aides, if they have a certain vest, if they have a booster seat, you know, if they travel with headphones, any of those things that are in their IEP for accommodations will be fully implemented.
One last additional question. And so how will we communicate this to families?
We're working on that. We wanted to kind of get a sense of support from the board for moving this concept forward. There are a number of communication pieces that need to begin to take place. We've said publicly now that we would be able to potentially move all of the middle schools on the same tier. That would need to be a communication piece. There might need to be a couple of slight adjustments relative to the other tier times, not necessarily the order, but the tier times. But then also, a general communication to families around contracted services for some students, and then a very specific communication to those students that would be impacted. So there are four or five different communication pieces that need to be occurring.
And in addition, once the finalize, we finalize which students would be impacted, and we've done that specific communication, there will be an opportunity for the families to meet the driver in person in their homes. That is part of the onboarding. So they will have a chance to meet the driver, or the driver will have a chance to meet the student. That is part of this company's practice.
Which we thought was a terrific scenario.
One question. So what kind of turnover does ACL currently experience? Everybody's having a hard time hiring and retaining?
I was just looking to Marcellus and looking through the FAQ that they provided for us. We can ask that question. We don't have a specific answer.
Ms. Omby.
And mine was very similar. I mean, it's comforting to me to know that families would be able to connect with that driver, particularly for some of our younger students, and particularly for those who have identified disabilities. And so it was warming, heartwarming to think that they might have that same driver all year. But I guess, you know, there was no crystal ball.
We've asked that question as a priority. And they've assured us that that stability piece is a factor for them, too. Obviously, just as we have substitute drivers at times, there will be those types of things. But that familiarity, we think, would be a real benefit. We also think that for some of our students, that the smaller vehicle, the shorter ride, the less noise, will actually be a real benefit. So.
I think this is something we could potentially learn from. Dr. Beers?
I just want to follow up on what Kev said earlier.
We can't hear you, sir.
I certainly support. Oh, I'm sorry. I support a stopgap, this stopgap measure. I think it's really critical. But I also think that if we, and we obviously have these situations where we're transporting a relatively small number of students, that we begin to build, you know, a fleet of vehicles that maybe at some point would mean that we wouldn't need to buy as many buses. I mean, I don't know how the numbers work on that, but I really, I've always wondered about that. And I think, and I think it's really something to, you know, really consider for the future, to do that. And maybe get electric vehicles.
So this will come forward. Sorry, Mrs. Hummel.
Ms. Hummel. Go ahead, Ms. Hummel.
Hi, I just, maybe you covered this or not, but the actual labeling of these cars, are they going to say WJCC, the vehicles? Are they going to be identified as transporting WJCC students?
I believe the cars will signify the name of the company, not dissimilar to when you see the orange peel group that moves folks to and from the airport. It says orange peel on the side of the van or the car. This, I believe, will say ALC on it.
Dr. Heron?
So this will come consideration of the board at the next meeting. And the timing of that is crucial to, if the board moves forward with it, to allow the company time to make sure they have all the drivers in place for the first day of school.
There aren't any other questions or comments. We'll move on to item 7.05, review rental requests for storage space to Ideal Investments LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schnipes is going to present this item. We have an ongoing need for storage as a school division, and this item brings that to the board's attention. Mr. Schnipes?
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Heron. As a division, we have consistently required storage for items. In addition, because of the new CDC guidelines and the recommendation that we space students three feet apart, some of those desks and items will need to be stored. And to store them in the school in spaces that are not always appropriate will create issues for us. So we are recommending this evening and asking for your support in renting storage from a local company in the amount of $360,000. However, that is spread over a course of six years. And I believe Ms. Ewing, she will correct me, it's averaged somewhere around $55,000 a year.
55 to 64. Over six years with a 3% escalation each year.
Questions or comments? Yeah, Ms. Omby.
I know that we have items stored kind of tucked away in different places now, some of them in our own buildings. But then I know that there are other places out there in the community. So will this give us opportunity to consolidate, or this is just on top of where we've already tucked stuff away?
No, you're exactly right. This will give us an opportunity to consolidate in one location.
Or special.
So as you can see here at the building that we're in, we have storage out in our hallways, which is not always the most appropriate. But this will allow us to put things in one location.
And so we would be signing a six-year contract? Is that what I heard?
That is correct.
So that first year looks like $55,740, and then a 3% increase going from there. My one question, I think, is looking at 6,146 square feet of commercial property. Does that do it? Are we looking, are we skimping? Are we looking at having to review this after six years?
I know that in our initial study that you heard from Mosley and the Facilities Master Plan, our Space Needs Analysis, they recommended 4,000 square feet at operations. So I believe this will give us enough space to continue to grow. In addition, I know we've talked about placing a need for that in the future in our capital improvement plan. So right now, yes, the answer is yes. We believe that is enough space to accommodate us.
Go ahead, Ms. Omby.
I'm sorry.
And we'll come to you, Ms. Young.
Follow-up question. So because I know we are using different places in the community, is there a cost saving since we're consolidating?
Currently, we use one specific location in the community. We are in discussions with the owner to determine what it would be to get out of that current contract and bring those items to the new storage facility.
Ms. Young?
And if that doesn't change, that contract will end at the end of this year.
Okay, I guess, will this, will this permit us to clear the hallways of our schools?
Yes, this is enough space currently to move things out of the hallways and out of areas where we should not be storing items and place them in a.
I mean, because I think, first of all, it's insightly, but the other thing is a safety issue. So I think that's a good thing. And secondly, will this provide an opportunity for operations to develop an inventory system so that if equipment is needed, that you can go in there and find it?
Yes, that's one of the things that we've talked about in our senior leadership team, is providing a space for, where we can consolidate items. And if there's a surplus, teachers and principals could look at these items to determine if there was a need before we went out and purchased other items.
Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions, virtually, in person? Thank you, sir, Mr. Schnipes. With that, we'll move on to item eight, information discussion items with a conversation around four WJCC schools, 2021, 2022. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no formal presentation on this topic, but it has been on the agenda for a significant amount of time. And so it remains on the agenda at this moment in time, if the board wishes to have any discussion.
Board, questions for staff? Dr. Heron? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really appreciate this item being on tonight's agenda, because it has been for more than a year. And so I appreciate the ability to chat about it. And frankly, what I would like to ask, Mr. Chair, and see what you think and the rest of the board, is now that the state of emergency for the state of Virginia has expired, I wonder if it's time to stop having this on the agenda at all and really kind of transition to an ops-normal, recognizing that ops-normal is not the normal that we used to know. But the things that are related to the pandemic, and we heard a speaker talk about tonight, the whole idea about, you know, the COVID slide. I mean, we have our eyes on that. It's, that's part of, we look at achievement gaps every year. Obviously, we're going to be looking at that with a different lens. We look at student safety every year. Obviously, we're going to be looking at that with a different lens. So the pandemic isn't over. It will inform our work, but I just wonder if we need a separate agenda item moving forward, or rather, if it's just better to just fold it into our work now that the state of emergency is over. So that's just what I would like to ask.
So, Ms. Cook, I think what I'm hearing you say is that we know that starting next fall, we have every intention of opening up on time, five days a week for all students. And with that, we're getting back to normal, especially with the understanding that we do still have a virus among us, and we know how to remain safe within that environment in our schools. And so maybe we take a straw poll among our board and see if we need to take what we have been doing for the last year and a half, return to learn in what became four WJCC schools, and pull that off of our agenda going forward. Is that what I'm hearing from you, Ms. Cook?
I'm just curious if it's time to do that now, and just fold the work into our regular work.
Can I start with our virtual members? And before we go there, Dr. Heron, would you like to comment on that?
The only comment I would make is that the board knows, as always, when we have information to bring, that the board needs to hear. That will be brought to the board as part of our normal conversations and normal agenda items.
Can I start with you, Mr. Kelly? Comments on that?
Yeah, you sure you can? That'd be great. As far as I'm concerned, if there's nothing specifically that the administration needs to bring to our attention, specifically towards the COVID virus, I don't see why we should necessarily keep it on our agenda, roll it over meeting after meeting. I do have concerns about where we go in the fall, particularly in October, November, December, when I think we're going to enter the cold flu and COVID season. And it might be a situation there where we have to bring it back. But if there's nothing to, if there's nothing to talk about, I don't know if we need to put it on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Thanks. My only thoughts really are related to when we are bringing all the students back, what are the expectations? I think we need to be clear about this in, you know, regarding CDC requirements, masking for those who are not vaccinated, any kind of social distancing, just so that it's all clear in our meetings that we're announcing that, that the administration is announcing it in the form of a school board meeting, so that everyone is just informed about this. And then, what could possibly be happening? Should we get a resurgence of cases? What happens with, what are the policies, or I guess, the regulations that we're going to follow for students having to quarantine or missing school? Some of those kind of decisions, if we could just make sure that we're communicating those decisions to the school population. That's my only comment.
Dr. Heron?
Mrs. Hummel, just in response to that, yes, we fully intend to have those public conversations with the board. Probably in the second meeting of August, we'll be setting the stage for the new year. And staff would be bringing that to the board as an agenda item, most certainly.
Dr. Heron? Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Young?
I think my only concern about getting rid of it, I'm not against getting rid of it. I think I'm with Mr. Kelly when he said he wanted to forget as soon as possible. But I would hope that we would get continued updates from our local health department and everything. And then I would hope that by August 30th, if not before, that the state would make a decision about whether or not students need to be masked. I would really like our students not have to wear a mask in school. I think it makes it difficult for them to communicate, especially our younger students. So, thank you.
Mr. Keever, can I ask you to respond to that?
And?
Ask in the fall. Sorry.
That's okay. We understand that there will be some additional information coming from Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Education in the next couple weeks. This morning, on the superintendent's call that Dr. Heron was a part of, Dr. Lane spoke to that specifically. Just as a reminder, the current masking scenario involves students in an indoor, in-school learning experience. And that masking scenario runs through the end of this calendar month. We would expect, this month being July, and we would expect more information as we get into the month of August.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I very much appreciated the return-to-learn presentations that were made at every one of our board meetings. And I'd like to see that continue, just the way you've been doing it. I don't think we have to do any additional, I don't feel we have to do any additional stuff. But it's, just as you said, as new information comes up, you put it together, it goes in, you know, you put it into your presentation, and, you know, we hear. And frankly, it's up to the public to watch and listen to what comes up. But, you know, it'll be covered by the press and all that. But I really, I found that very, really helpful, really useful.
Ms. Omby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with some of our colleagues. I don't think we need to have the specific action item on there. I think it's hard to predict what our board meetings are going to look like, quite frankly. I think staff will do their level best to inform us. And I think things will be fluid. And I think we all have expectations, and staff will work really hard to meet them and to inform us, and through us, then informing the public. So I think, as information arises, and you need to share that with us, you will. I don't think this action item needs, or this specific, you know, agenda item needs to be there. But we're going to have the eye on the prize, as Ms. Cook said, information about COVID slide, about our subgroups, about, you know, where kids are at. I think we're going to have a different kind of board meeting going forward than we have certainly in my last five years on this board. So the kind of information that we're going to ask for, and we're going to need, so that we can ensure all of our students succeed, will look really different. And I don't know what that's going to look like.
I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Cook for bringing the question to the board and all the comments. And the, I think what I am hearing is a sense of appreciation over the last year from the board, to you, Dr. Heron, and your staff, to be transparent to us and to the community, to be proactive in your thinking and how you respond to the virus, protecting all students and staff and faculty. And for me, and I think I'm hearing a similar sentiment, that we trust that you have the best interest, and that as we pull this off of the agenda, we know that you'll stay in constant communication with us, and that we can trust that. So I think that's the sense of the board. And I'll leave it to Mr. Kelly and Dr. Heron to hash that out.
Any other items on four WJCC schools conversation from the board to the staff? Hearing none, we will move on to item nine, policies. Beginning with 9.01, revised policy DB annual budget.
And I believe Ms. Ewing is going to lead us on this one.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to revise policy DB annual budget. This policy was last revised in 2018. There are no substantive changes to the policy, just some verbiage updates, as well as legal reference updates. Our attorney has reviewed, as well as the policy committee. Our attorney has reviewed, as well as the policy committee, and recommend approval of the policy as presented.
From the policy committee, it's really that simple? Question, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I just happened to, I know that a lot of this language is actually from the VSBA document, but for most of the school divisions around the state, they submit their budgets to an appropriate body. We submit it to two appropriate bodies. I would change, it's line 14, to appropriate bodies for us. That's, you know, we're probably the only ones that have that. Oh, three, okay. Is that okay?
Any discussion from the board on that recommendation?
Makes sense.
I see that it makes sense. Mr. Kelly, Ms. Hummel?
Makes sense. Thanks, Dr. Beers.
I have no issue with that. The only thing I would have an issue is spelling the superintendent correctly in line 21.
No.
But I definitely agree with Dr. Beers that it should be appropriate in bodies. That was a good catch.
And I'll also update that in line 27 as well.
So I don't think that this needs to come back to the board? Will we just simply accept those corrections and call it approved after tonight's meeting?
Well, it goes into consent for next.
Correct, same. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Ms. Cook? All right, we'll move on to 9.02, 9.02, revised policy DIA reporting per pupil costs.
Ms. Yuen has this one, too.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to revise policy DIA reporting per pupil costs. This policy was adopted in 2015, and this will be the first revision. Again, there are no substantive changes to the policy, just verbiage updates and some legal reference updates. Our attorney, again, has reviewed this one, as well as the policy committee, and recommend approval as presented.
Questions from the board?
It looks like we've got bodies rather than body, so I think we're okay on this one.
It is plural.
Well done.
I write it ahead, and it is, it is plural already.
We'll keep an eye out for that. 9.03, revised policy IIBEA slash GAB, or GAB slash IIBEA, acceptable technology system use.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Landers will stay in place for the next two policies, I believe. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to review recommended updates to policy IIBEA GAB, the Division Acceptable Technology System Use Policy. The policy was last reviewed in 2019, and the recommended changes are to remove the initial two paragraphs and add language regarding the purpose of the Division Technology Systems to more closely align with the VSBA policy. Additional slight wording changes are also recommended for consistency and also updates to the cross-references. Recommended changes have been reviewed by or suggested by the Division Attorney and have also been reviewed by the Policy Committee. Thank you, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Hearing or seeing none?
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Kelly, and then we'll go to Ms. Young. Mr. Kelly?
The Division's computer system is not a public forum. I'm just curious as to what the genesis of that statement is and what the definition of a public forum is, because the next line says, "No expectation of privacy." So I was just trying to understand that.
Basically, that indicates that the computer systems are owned by the Division. They are not open to general public use, and that the users of the system should not assume that they have a right to privacy using those systems.
Okay, so not being a public forum means it's for the employees, students, and staff at WJCC and not for the general public?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, I got that. Thank you.
Ms. Young?
I'm sorry, my machine just blipped out, but I did have a question, because we have spent a great deal of money on technology. Will that technology be used to observe teachers in the future? I know it's an off-the-wall question, but it's on my mind, well, because teachers will be observed for any number of reasons, but is that a possible use of that equipment?
Possible? I would have to say yes, it could be possible. Has it been discussed? Not to my knowledge.
It's not in our thinking at this moment in time.
Okay, thank you. Out of the blue, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Okay, we'll move to 9.04, retire policy IIBE, Bring Your Own Device Program.
Thank you, sir. This next policy presented for review is to retire policy IIBE, Bring Your Own Device. This policy was last reviewed in 2019, and it was initially adopted as a method to supplement our efforts toward becoming a one-to-one laptop division. Now that we are fully one-to-one, the policy is no longer required, and should students desire to bring a personal electronic device to school, then policy JFC, student contact, would remain in effect. There is no corresponding VSBA policy. This recommendation has been reviewed by the Division Attorney as well as the Policy Committee. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll just add that when we looked at this one, seeing that we were asked to consider retiring this policy, we asked, well, is there a companion regulation that will remain in place if a student desired to use their own device? And there is, and it's on that IIBEAR regulation. Any questions from the board? Mr. Kelly, Ms. Hummel?
Thank you.
We'll move on to 9.05, create policy GCBB, supplementary pay.
This policy, Mr. Keever's going to talk about, and it's very much in response to a conversation and discussion of the board surrounding the role of coaches and other salary folks in the school division. So, Mr. Keever, I'm going to let you walk through what we're, our thinking.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This is a, this is an interesting conversation from the perspective of looking at coaches and expectations for coaches in terms of how they handle themselves, how they behave, and some of those kinds of scenarios. And I think that the concern is really around potentially our coaches who are also coaching in other programs outside of the school division. And as we looked at our policies and regulations and looked at our processes, it became apparent that we needed to address a couple pieces. And one of those pieces that we needed to address was by creating a supplementary pay policy. Supplementary pay is not a policy that we have. There is policy language available from VSBA, and as we looked at the coaching scenario brought forward from the board conversation, the concept of adding a supplementary pay policy was one that we supported and felt like would be appropriate for this board to do. It allows us to add some specific language to address coaching expectations and refer to a contract that a coach would sign when they join us to have a coaching responsibility. By way of process, it's important to note that we have, on a yearly basis, those folks that coach for us are signing off on what we call the stipend assignment form. That stipend assignment form really triggers their ability to be paid, but there wasn't specific language on the stipend assignment form that laid out the expectation around the coaching scenarios and following policies and procedures, and not creating potential conflicts of interest based on affiliation with a club as a club coach or an executive director or director of club coaching programs. So we would ask the board to support the concept of the supplementary pay policy. Outside of that, if the board chose not to go that direction, we do feel and have started to include specific contract language for our coaches on the stipend amendment, the stipend assignment form. That process is beginning now in advance of the fall, and the information on that actual document, it will be reviewed with all coaches and coaches' meetings leading into the season. So I'll pause there and try to answer some questions around process if necessary, but we do recommend adopting the supplementary pay policy, and we will continue to move forward with counseling our coaches on what our expectations are and relative to avoiding conflicts of interest.
Ms. Cook?
Anyway, I'm always going first. So thank you very much. This is an issue that I have spoken about many times, and I guess I have a specific question, then I'll step back and kind of share some, a perspective on this issue. So my specific question is, does WJCC issue coaches that are not our employees a WJCC email or a phone?
We currently do not. And just so, I refer to, and maybe I misrefer, but I call those folks non-employee coaches, because they don't work for us, you know, during the course of the day. They work for us as, so I refer to that group as non-employee coaches. Those folks are not issued currently network access, i.e. an email address or email access, and they're not issued telephones.
So that's an, that's an in-the-weeds administrative issue, so I, as a board member, I don't have any say over that. I just will say that I have observed over the years in multiple sports, communications from coaches, non-employee coaches, to school players from either personal email addresses or phones, or their club email or phone. And I think that that can inadvertently muddy some waters and perhaps send signals about, you know, to parents and players. So I just offer that as another layer to consider.
Thank you.
And then also, just stepping back for a moment, I think, I think the ideal scenario, I mean, one of the things about middle school and high school that's so critically important to student engagement, which then leads to student achievement, is creating a sense of community, right? And we know that achievement is higher in students who participate in extracurricular activities. The research is very clear on that. And so as part of creating a community, I think it is better for employees of that school to lead these activities, whether they be theatrical or athletic or any kind of extracurricular activity. And that's why I think the Virginia School Board Association and the Virginia High School League have partnered to further that. And so I think that this board should, and this Division should try to increase that. I believe, if I'm correct, right now, the coaching is about 50/50 employee, non-employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so I think it would be better, when those coaches are in the building with those students, they know more about what's going on. They can also identify kids who a non-employee coach might not be able to identify, to, again, create that sense of community. We have activities that don't, that aren't full. We have activities, athletics, that don't have a JV team. Coaches who are in those buildings have a better ability to create that sense of community and improve student achievement through student engagement. So I think we should try to look at that, and if it means increasing stipends, if it means providing training specific to a sport, to allow a teacher or a staff member to feel equipped to coach that sport, or to lead that debate club, then I think we should consider doing that. Because at the end of the day, we know that, starting in fifth grade, student achievement and connectivity, I mean, sorry, student engagement, rather, starts to decline, and we've tried to create programs to combat that, and this is one way to do that. And I think 50/50 is probably not ideal, and I'd like to see that changed, and I think we have to look at that to change. So I think this is a great first step, but I'd love to see us do more.
If I may, Ms. Cook, and I recognize it was less of a question and more of a statement, but I have not ever met a secondary school principal, and it doesn't matter the locale that it's been, that doesn't want 100% of their coaches and advisors in the building. And I think that that is the goal, day in and day out. I think that the staffing requirements and certification requirements that we see make that more and more complicated, but I think administration would fully concur that we ought to look for and continue to advocate for more and more of our coaches being a member of that full-time staff in some capacity.
Are there any high schools in the state that really have done this well, that they've made it a point, and they have a higher ratio, and they've taken into, I mean, I wonder if there are any case studies we could take a look at?
We could certainly ask that. I will say that across the state, I think the number, the proportion continues to go the wrong direction in terms of coaches and sponsors being what I refer to as the non-employee coaches and sponsors. And there are a number of factors for that, but it's something that we would want to continue to counterbalance.
Any questions for Dr. Keever? Mr. Keever, soon to be Dr. Keever?
No pressure there, Mr. Dow.
Mr. Kelly, Ms. Hummel, you good?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dow. I just tapping off from where Ms. Cook took off, left off from. I do think that we need to have, I don't know if it's a board policy about expectations on coaches so that it's more formalized and more written down in consistency from school to school, you know, and really emphasizing the reduction of the conflict of interest as much as possible. I think that's, that is really important, that be delineated to those coaches and that they have a full understanding of that, and do everything we can to reduce that concept of interest and at least make it, make people aware of it as much as possible, disclose it as much as possible, because I think we do run afoul of that on occasion.
Mr. Kelly, to your point, there is a coach's handbook that is revised on an annual basis. That handbook would be revised again to include the specific expectation language that's on the contract information on the back of the stipend assignment form, and we do intend to meet with coaches as we get into the month of August and explain and delineate expectations around some of the key features of that handbook. And I will help and share with Dr. Worley and the athletics group that that information is being transmitted accordingly.
I appreciate that, Mr. Keever. It's an interesting dynamic in that there is less and less, you know, people talk about, you know, high school sports being the gateway to the, to college and college scholarships and all that other stuff, and there's really very few, very few sports that still recruit out of high school, and it's more on the travel and the AAU-type teams than it is on high school sports. So it's, I don't, I don't really know where that is going to go in the long term, but it's certainly interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
And then I just wanted to thank, thank Mrs. Cook for bringing, kind of, bringing this to the forefront for us to discuss. And also just to make note that it's come before the board because there have been issues, there have been conflict of interests there. And so I guess I would just like to know that once a coach signs their stipend agreement, that if they violate it, that there are ramifications for violating it.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Dr. Beers?
I guess what I would say is that conflict is, exists forever. It's been, and it has, not so much that it's been, it's been growing, but I think part of it is, there just are not enough high school teachers who want to become, who want to be coaches. For one thing, the pay is pretty, you know, I know what club, I know what coaches of big clubs make up in Northern Virginia, but I also know up in Northern Virginia that the high schools that have excellent soccer teams, those kids- teams, those kids also are going to be on probably another club team. But I, I, I don't think it, doesn't create a situation where the high school teams aren't just as competitive or, or are competitive. And I frankly, if I can't find a high school teacher who wants to coach in my high school, if I can get an assistant coach in the club or somebody who's a part of the club to take over and do it, then I'm going to support that. Because I, I want my kids, if my kids are in that high school, I want them to have a, I want a coach. I want them to be able to play. So, it's a, I know, it's a, it's a slippery slope and I know we're going to work on the policies, but it's, it's, if, as you said, I think in a more of a bargaining position if that swing was going the other way instead of going down. It's hard. And I know it's frustrating for parents, too. They really don't know the way to get.
All right. So, with that, we'll move on to item 9.06, Discuss Policy, JFCA Student Dress Code. At our last meeting, we had approved a, this policy from the policy committee's recommendation. And at that meeting, Ms. Hummel asked that we take it up again, having heard from one of our own students and parents. Ms. Hummel, would you like to lead us off in this?
Sure. I think that all of us were, were impressed by the student speaker at our last board meeting. And I, I think the, it was the term distracted, destructive was what was ending up being pretty subjective. And, and so, we, we took it back. We talked to, in particular, maybe Ms. Bourgeois could, could talk to the rest of the board and the, and the, any viewers to give her, her viewpoint on the pros and cons of, of removing the distraction from the policy and, I guess, the arguments for keeping it in. So, perhaps either Dr. Keever or Ms. Bourgeois could address that for the board.
Ms. Bourgeois is in place and ready to go.
Thank you. I'm sure Mr. Keever can help me out a little here, too. Yes, we did take it back to committee and had a discussion. When we did the revisions that were brought before the board in June, it had previously said distracting, disruptive, and revealing. And we had purposely taken the word revealing out because we felt that was strongly subjective. And we chose to leave in distracting and disruptive because while there can be some interpretation that they're similar, they can also look different in a classroom and in a school building. And so, we see that as a training component. It's, it's hard to identify a purely objective word to, to put there. And so, like many of the, the pieces of our student code of conduct and policies that address student behavior specifically, that we see that as a, a training component of how we identify that. And what does that mean? And what would it take for, for clothing to become distracting or disruptive?
So, in the case of this senior, I think what, what resonated with me is that her sundress was not at all destructive. It wasn't disruptive or destructive, but it did meet the qualifications of what would be considered destructive in the letter of the law or whatever, in the code of conduct. So, I, I agree that we can't remove the word destructive, but I would urge the administrators, the security guards, whatever, not to be, not to be quite on the lookout for, for things that truly aren't destructive but might meet the criteria in the student code of conduct, if that makes sense. I think Mr. Keever put it, put it well. He said, you know, you have people that are driving on the highway and they might be speeding, but there's somebody else that's speeding, but they don't get caught and you do get caught. And that's just life. And life isn't fair. But I don't, I just am, I guess, imploring our administrators, our, our security people not to be actively seeking, call people out on, on things if they're not truly destructive. And I, I, so I don't know. I'm really interested in hearing what the rest of the board thinks about that.
If I can add real quick, as a member of the policy committee, I was also interested in, in having this one come back. I wanted to review it for the sake of the student that felt like she had been marginalized and, and, and perhaps even mistreated. And so, when we looked at the language again, distracting and the other word, I'm sorry?
Disruptive.
Disruptive, thank you. Those, to me, go hand in hand. One can, you know, what's, is distracting can become disruptive in a learning environment. And so, I didn't want to pull either one of those words out of the policy. And for me, when we were discussing this, it really came down to whose responsibility is it? And then the training. And for me, it came down to, if you're addressing a young lady, it should be a young, or a lady, maybe young, addressing that young lady's dress. If it's a young man, it should be a gentleman addressing it. That's me, that's my preference. I'm not, you know, handing out any edicts or anything. But it really does come down to, to training for me. And I think that's well in place. Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Young?
I'll go first, Ms. Cook.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I guess in this training, would that be provided to administrators, security guards, teachers? I mean, I'm interested in who you're planning on providing this training to.
So, we, we've already communicated with Dr. Worley and, and Mr. Walker, because it really does start with the administrative team and then it's the tone they set in their building. So, we would, the school leadership would be working with school administration to put that into place.
Okay. And that would include security guards, I assume?
If I could just, just add, in a building, every single adult is responsible for the code of conduct, for the dress code. I can remember many hours in hallways taking hats, caps off students. And so, everyone's part of that culture of doing the right thing. And so, I think it will come through the administration and then it's up to them to go through their, the code of conduct with their staff and how to approach things.
Thank you. I, I mean, so much of that is just so subjective. I mean, and I think that's where it becomes difficult. So, anyway, I appreciate your efforts and thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I personally, and as a school board member, probably lean more towards the sort of conservative approach to dress codes in general. But I will tell you, after the speaker last time in the discussion around the board, I did, you know, talk to my daughter, who is a high school, a high schooler, and, and several of her peers. And there's a tremendous amount of resentment among young ladies and the young female students about the dress code. They feel that it, that girls are targeted more than boys and they feel that just fashion that's acceptable and normal and that they would wear to, you know, out to dinner or to a place of worship is something that they can't wear to school. And, and so, there's just a lot of frustration out there. And I was surprised at the, the intensity of that. But, and I think we heard a little bit about it from, from that young woman who came to speak. But it's, it's really out there and, and a lot of young women feel targeted, frankly, for what they, what they wear in schools. And it's just interesting. And I don't know that there's anything to be done about it, but there's definitely that sense. So, I just thought I would comment because I talked to several, several young people about it.
Ms. Cook, Ms. Ombi?
Thank you. Just a couple comments, I guess. So, I know in serving on the student advisory committee, the dress code has come up and, and the time that I've served on that committee. And students have said that there's some inconsistency in, in which students are deemed as wearing something inappropriate. And so, again, I think that circles, we need to circle back around to the, to the training. And, and having four kids of my own and, and a daughter, I know that when she was in middle school, like she was expected to wear shorts that came down to her knees. Came down to her knees.
Sorry, 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 I didn't mean to do that. I don't know what I did, I'm sorry.
Came down to her knees. As a parent, it was almost impossible to find those shorts. And she had friends who went to a different middle school in this division, and that expectation was not there. So, getting back to the division of the sexes, I think, I agree, we need to have a dress code, but I think we are overly harsh on our, on, on our female students. And we sometimes make it difficult for parents to buy things when they just don't make them anymore. Shorts are a certain, I'm not talking shorty shorts, but, so I, I don't know the right answer. I know that it's a struggle. And I know that when my daughter went to high school, having her middle school experience, the first question we asked a security officer was, do my shorts have to come down to where my fingertips are? And one security officer said yes, and the other one said no. So, so yes, we need training. Getting back to that student who came, her dress was totally appropriate. So, I would hope that that would be deemed as appropriate and not inappropriate. I don't, I don't see what was inappropriate about that dress. So, the struggle is real. I don't know what the answer is. It's in the weeds. It's not, it's not our job. But as a parent, I think we make it hard, harder than maybe it needs to be.
Yeah, I'd, Mr. Dowell?
Yes, sir. Mr. Kelly?
I would, I would say this, this debate has gone on since public schools came into existence and, and a century or so ago, you know, as far as dress code. And having a daughter who has particularly long arms struggling with that same dress code in middle school as well. So, it's a, it's a, the debate that continues and, and as cultural acceptance and norms change, it's all going to change. And it's, it's, it is a struggle. And I appreciate that. I also do appreciate consent, you know, by the policy committee of the, of the parents and the, and the students who came to us and, and giving their, giving their words some consideration and some thought. And I thought that, I think that's great. And I, I appreciate them coming forward with their concerns and comments and allowing us to take a second look at that policy. So, I just want to make sure that it's articulated to the student and, and her parents.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. That wraps up policies. I want to ask, before we move on to item 10, action items, that if the board is willing to place all of these policies except GCBB on the next meeting's consent agenda, I'm assuming perhaps there might be more discussion around supplementary pay? Or are we good there? Good there? Ms. Hummel, Mr. Kelly?
I, I mean, I think we're, we're good on that. I think it's just clarifying, you know, when, in that coach's handbook and making sure that maybe in the coach's handbook, and this is once again, getting in the weeds, so it's not my, my role. I'm just saying, what are the ramifications for violating the coach's code of conduct? But that doesn't really have anything to do with this policy. So, I think the policy can move forward.
Seems like everybody's comfortable with GCB, GCBB. And so, we'll place all six policies on next meeting's consent agenda. Bring us, sir?
Yeah, I mean, to, to your point there, Greg, I think there's going to be more, there's no, needs, needs to be more work done on our guidance to our coaches and, and, you know, whether that, that guidance needs to be in policy or, or not. But I think it's important that the first step is a supplementary pay and, and we have more structure as to how we pay them and what our expectations are for that pay.
Yes, sir. On to 10.01 Personnel Actions. I get a motion to approve personnel this evening.
I move that the board approved the personnel actions as presented.
Have a second.
Second.
Ms. Cook, thank you for the second. Ms. Aller?
It was Ombi. Doesn't matter, we sound the same.
Oh, was it? I'm sorry.
We are the same.
We're twins. All good.
Ms. Ombi, thank you.
Dr. Beers?
Yes. Yay. Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Aye, yay, yes.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. That'll take us to 10.02, which should be now.
Personnel investigation.
Personnel investigations. Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board uphold the superintendent's decision and the personnel investigation discussed, personnel investigation appeal discussed this evening and authorize the chair to issue a written decision setting forth the school board's rationale.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item 10.02, excuse me, 10.03 now, approval of VSBA voting delegate and alternate delegate appointment. Have a motion.
I move that the board approved the appointment of the chair and the vice chair to serve as VSBA voting delegate and alternate delegate for the VSBA delegate assembly and regional meetings for the VSBA annual convention, November 17 through 19 in the year 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. And lastly, item 10.04, Approval of Contract Renewal with Creative Leadership Solutions, CLS. Is there a motion?
I move that the board approve the renewal of contracts with creative leadership solutions for a cost of $255,900.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Upstaying.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Takes us to item 11, Board Members Matters Requests. Comments from the board. Can we start with Ms. Hummel and we'll go around?
Thank you. Thanks for everyone's accommodation of my being out of town. I really appreciate it. I wanted to thank all of our speakers tonight. It was really refreshing to, to just hear the civility of each of the comments. Very, very good things were said, very good points, and everyone was respectful of the rules and respectful of each other. So, I just wanted to say thank you to our community for coming out tonight and sharing their opinions with us.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to echo Ms. Hummel's comments and thanks to all of our speakers tonight. It's a commitment to come out here and it's wonderful to hear from everybody. And I just wanted to also thank, as a school board member and also as a parent, particularly this year, the entire staff and particularly Ms. Bourgeois, for their work on the three graduations. There, it was a wonderful day, two days, and the parades were awesome. And anyway, it was, it was fabulous and we were glad to get through this year. It was one for the history books. So, anyway, thank you.
Ms. Cook, Ms. Young?
I have that on my list of things, too. First, I want to thank the tennis team, people today, the, the young ladies who achieved so much and congratulate them. That's quite an honor. Secondly, congratulations to our, to our graduates and I wish them well. And I, I heard a lot of parents saying it was their last one. So, and I, and that heat, I think they deserve that. I, I do want to say how, how much I appreciate staff's work on that. It was so well done, so professional, and went off without a hitch. I mean, I, if there were, if there was a hitch, I didn't notice it. And other than the fact that I, I thought Mr. Kelly was going to melt on the podium. But I, I do appreciate all the hard work that went into those graduations and it was wonderful to be able to have them. And, and again, thank you for our speakers tonight. The civility was... The civility was, was wonderful and, and it's, it's, I loved the fact that our community is coming out. I think that is, it's nice to know that they're paying attention. But anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Beers.
Yeah, I, I have heard really wonderful things about the, these three graduations this year. Unfortunately, and I, I very much regret that I wasn't not able to go there, but I was, I had to attend, I had, I attended the graduation of my oldest grandson from high school in, in Rico County. And that weekend actually also happened to include my anniversary to, with Carol Beers. So I regrettably was not here. But I, I just think, I, I've, and, and anybody who hasn't seen them, the, the videos of the three graduations are really, really wonderful. To everybody that helped carry that off, it really, it just looked great. It really.
Ms. Ombi.
Thank you. I too am encouraged that we have such a huge commitment from our community members who are willing to take their time and come to speak to us. I think we haven't had a crowd that big since we were doing something like redistricting or cutting the budget. And so, and usually those items are directly impacting our students and our division. And so I am a little saddened and I, and I caution this community because I think some people are getting caught up in national propaganda that has absolutely nothing to do with WJCC schools and, and what we do. And I trust and have all faith that staff will lead this division with a laser focus on equity, which is about access. And, and not every student can access the curriculum the same way, right? So we talk about achievement, we talk about subgroups. And so equity is about helping those students with special educational needs access the curriculum so that they can be, they can achieve all their hopes and dreams and goals. It's about helping students who are English language learners access curriculum. Likewise, our students who are economically disadvantaged. So, so equity is about access. And so I am, I am a little worried that some folks in our community are taking words out of context. And it is somewhat hyperbolic and unnecessary and, and not at all about WJCC.
Mr. Kelly, if I can allow you to go last as our chair, and I'll, I'll take a moment here. I just want to say, as I first had an opportunity to chat with our speakers in the hall before the, the meeting began, I was just really encouraged to, to see just the various different people who were going to speak on what, one topic or the other. And then they come in and that encouragement just kind of morphed into pride. I just had so much pride for our community, WJCC, Williamsburg, Jav county, where we are and who we are. And I won't name any other divisions, but we are clearly not those other divisions. We have respect for one another. We have strong feelings about what we feel strongly about, and yet we can still voice those things and show appreciation for the next person's perspective. I saw that, it rang true tonight. And I know that as this continues, these conversations continue, we should allow robust conversation, we should be attentive to them. I, I'm encouraged about what will come out of that. So thank you to all of our public speakers. Thank you for coming out and for really caring and knowing that your voice is heard. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. I really have nothing to add to what has already been spoken. First of all, I'd like to appreciate, I appreciate everybody for allowing me to participate electronically and virtually for my family vacation. I had several members of my extended family here in Polley's Island and it's just been a great, great to get away. Mrs. Young, I did think I was going to melt on the podium, actually. I was really concerned about that for, for a couple of those. But the work on the graduation ceremonies were just outstanding. I, I, I can't thank staff enough. They were very professional, the students were very organized. I even, I, I really enjoyed the recessional degrading into a mob. I just kind of enjoyed walking through all those excited students as they're coming out of their chairs. And I just thought that, that was just, just great and I, I really enjoyed all of that. I thank Mr. Dowell for being the wingman for all three of the graduations and, and going through all that heat with me because that was, that was a little, that was warm. But I thought the graduations outside were great. I thought I really enjoyed having them outside. Fortunately, it wasn't raining on us or thunder and lightning and all of that, but I just, I enjoyed the graduations. And I think we, we really were able to give this senior class a good send off and a, and a good appreciation for all that they endured through this, through this past year. So I just want to make sure that we thank staff for that. As we move forward and going back to our, the new normal will be, I guess, I think we have to kind of look at our public meetings and figure out how we can get the, get more of the public to be there, particularly in work sessions like this, and have, and have more, more public in front of us. So, but I, I thank everybody for their hard work this past year and look forward to moving forward into the, the new school year with our, with our new normal. So that's all I have, Mr. Dowell, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Looking at upcoming events, we've got on July 29th, 8:30 a.m., policy committee meeting here in room 300 at the NX. Ms. Hummel, you able to do that in person?
No, I'll be.
You'll be Zooming, okay.
Do a Zoom.
Okay. On August 5th at 3:00 p.m.
Oh, August 5th, I'll be back.
No, 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 we're, we're moving on.
Oh, sorry.
Wait for it. August 5th, 3:00 p.m., Class of 2021 Summer Graduation Ceremony at War Hill High School. And then upcoming meetings, closed session on August 3rd at 5:30 p.m. here in room 300, work session on August 3rd at 6:30 p.m. at the same location, closed session on August 17th at 6:00 p.m. at the Stryker Center, and then regular meeting following at 6:30 at the Stryker Center. The agenda is already set for the next board meeting. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.